We were just commenting on how well-trained you have become since the nearing of the 5:30 hour. The hour being 5:30 and 17 seconds. Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this evening, July the 8th. Can you believe it? Already July. I will call us all to order since we are all here, and I will ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Denise Terry.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful tonight to have celebrated our country in our Independence Day and the privilege to gather freely. And may our hearts be kind, may our minds be fierce, and our spirits brave. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. In light of we have a number of uniforms in the audience tonight, I'm going to ask that one of our uniformed people come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Joshua Agee, if you'll come and show us how it's done, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I give you a little cute, funny, you're standing outside, and I said, "Okay, which of you gentlemen wants to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?" And somehow Joshua got pushed out in front. So he rose to the occasion. Thank you, sir, very much. Commissioner, you have had the agenda since last Friday. Unless they hear otherwise, I will assume it meets with your approval. We will proceed to the Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to address the commission and staff for three minutes on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. There'll be an opportunity later on to do the same on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. So, any takers? Sing none, we'll move right on into item one, and that is the Fire Department Life Saving Award. Chief Luke, if you'll do us the honor, sir. Yeah, yeah, front and center, sir, front and center.
We got your back this time.
That's right.
Before I turn this over, Chief Bromfield, just want to say, this is a very important recognition. Thank you. No problem. Just want to let everybody know, this is a very important recognition. It goes to the core of our values of life safety. And Chief Bromfield is going to give you a backstory on this accomplishment and the recognition that we'll be getting tonight. And I'll have the honor of paying the Life Safety Medal on their jacket.
Good evening. We're here to recognize firefighter Michael Bug, Lieutenant Matthew Groves, and retired Lieutenant Scotty Caldwell. You may recognize Scotty. Last time he was here, we were celebrating his retirement, but he still had a couple of shifts left to go. And in those couple of shifts, he stirred up a lot of things. But anyway, on the morning of December the 19th at 2:42 a.m., Danville 911 received a call for a six-unit apartment building fire with smoke coming from one apartment on Nakoma Street. The caller believed that the apartment was still occupied at that time. Prior to the fire department's arrival, the neighbors had kicked open the door in an attempt to rescue the occupant. And shortly thereafter, the Danville Police Department arrived on scene and also attempted rescue of the occupant. They were pushed back by the heat and smoke and was unable to reach the victim. And they themselves sustained minor injuries in the attempted rescue. The police also went from door to door of the apartment building to make sure that everyone was evacuated from the structure. When Engine 12 arrived on scene in Battalion 2, Engine 12, they pulled a hose line and made entry into the fire apartment. They were faced with heavy smoke and heat conditions. In searching the apartment, they entered the bedroom that was on fire and located an unconscious victim. The unconscious victim was at the foot of the bed on the floor. Under these fire conditions, they removed the victim from the building. And once removed from the building, they began patient care. Once the Bull County EMS arrived on scene, Troy Gavin and Andrew Green were on that unit. Troy was a part-time firefighter with the city of Danville Fire Department, and Andrew currently is. But the patient was transferred to their care and then transported to McDowell Hospital. And once the victim was stabilized, they were flown by helicopter to Louisville Hospital's burn unit. Due to the heroic rescue that night by Lieutenant Caldwell, Lieutenant Groves, and Michael Bug, the victim survived. And a few months later, was released from the hospital to come home. So at this moment, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Luke for the medal presentation.
With that, I want to thank you for your service and what you've done to help the community. And thanks for that. Thank you very much.
and I think I can comfortably speak for staff as well, as well as all Danvillians, your service is so incredibly valuable. It's underestimated, sometimes unappreciated. But there are occasions like this that become a reminder to us and hopefully to you as to how much we do value and appreciate all that you do, many times unknown. So thank you. If the commission would like to say anything, feel free.
I guess it's appropriate to say amen and second that, right?
Yeah.
Right. I think it's worth another round of applause, too.
Item two is the approval of the minutes of the previous two meetings, that being June the 19th and June the 24th. Chair will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved, the approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in discussion. Sing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign, motion carries. Item three is the Code's Enforcement Report. Doesn't sound like John.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
As you can see from your report for June that's in front of you, we issued 31 business licenses. We placed 15 liens in the amount of $3,110, and we recovered two of those for $401.86. We issued 41 violations, notice of violations. We had a total for the month of 126 for inspections and violations. We issued 57 parking tickets. We also issued, I put a copy of all of our alcohol licenses in there. We issued two new ones to the Hampton Inn and the Holiday Inn. So we have a total now of 48 licensees with a total of 92 licenses issued. Each license has different requirements that you have to meet for that. Also, I gave you a copy of just our call log, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the calls that we get that I thought would be helpful for you to see some of the things that the officers are dealing with in a month's time. In addition to that, we were able to demolish 206 Wilderness Road. And then, as you can see from your condemned properties list, we've added some condemned properties to that, and some have been, and if you'll note, 628 Cloverdale at the back there, that was a collaborative effort with us and the police department.
That word, I'm sorry. Repeat that, please.
I received calls from the neighbors thanking us for the help and assistance that we're able to do there. We were able to condemn the property, and the occupant in the house was arrested. I had several warrants on them. There was suspected drug activity there going on. And so the neighbors were very appreciative for everything that everyone did in helping. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Once again, Bridgette, not a question, but just to enhance some of the work that your folks are doing. Once again, I'm going to go to condemned city properties report updated activities. And of their 13 you've listed, there's positive action going on. Eight of those.
Yes, yes.
And so the other five, again, have things that are really not in your control. Someone's gone to the nursing home, et cetera, et cetera. So I bring that up so that the folks out here can hear that. I think you're doing a really good job with all that.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate the call log, though. That's interesting, the things that I hadn't thought about that you all actually take care of or at least get.
There's a lot of calls coming in. We want to make sure they get all the different houses and getting all the services. It's very helpful to give you a...
Yeah. Thank you. Item four is City Manager Report. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Commissioner. I would briefly mention that with regard to the request for proposals to seek a professional recruitment firm to assist the commission in recruiting the next city manager for Danville, I have received proposals from two of the six firms already. I received those last week. And I do expect, as I think maybe I've mentioned before, to receive the proposals from the other four this week. So we will get that information to you as all of those come in. And we do have a meeting scheduled, I believe, the following Wednesday after the 12th to review those.
That is correct, the 17th at 4:00 p.m.
The other thing I would mention as a new project, with the passage of the budget for the new fiscal year, we had included in that budget funding for the retention of a professional planning firm or consultant to develop a downtown master plan. And the staff has put together a request for qualifications and placed advertisement for that in the local newspaper and maybe in other sources. And we will be seeking from a qualified planning firm or consultant assistance in that process. The role of that consultant or planning firm would be really to facilitate our community-wide conversation about our future as we wish to see it develop and to have discussions with a lot of people in the community regarding that and to basically develop a recommended set of proposals on urban design, our future land use, and our transportation plan for Danville with the goals of meeting those objectives that our community might express. Now, the process that we typically follow in evaluating firms and recommending them to the City Commission is one that I would recommend we follow in this instance. And that is, we receive in the proposals from firms or consultants that are qualified to provide those services. They go through an evaluation process by staff. We will present those in rank order to the City Commission with recommendations as to 1, 2, 3, at least rank 3 out of however many we may get. The City Commission could accept that recommendation from staff. Or if you wish to, you could interview those firms, either the top three or all the firms, and come to your own conclusions with regard to the desired firm to assist our community in providing those services. If you then select a firm and we enter into a contract with that firm, I would see it the role of the commission to then appoint a, I'm not sure what the name of that committee would be, but a community committee to work with that consultant, that firm, to represent ideas for our community that the consultant would then condense into a written report to be brought back to the community at a future point in time. Probably, this effort is going to be one that has robust participation by the public, by other entities in our city and community, and possibly will not be completed until about this time next year. But it's an important update to our urban landscape desires here. And we'll be beginning that process with the receipt of those proposals in the near future.
Questions, comments?
If I could, I have four questions. And it's really not to put anybody in the spot, city manager or staff, but just to kind of bring us up to speed on a few things, if I could do that now or I can wait till Commissioner comments.
Unless anyone else has anything else, we'll just segue right into Commissioner comments.
Well, you've got Hear the Public.
You are correct. So it's your call. I'll let you decide.
Let's go to Hear the Public.
Okay. Anything else, Ron?
No, sir.
Okay. We're in the section of Hear the Public. Three minutes at the microphone on any item not on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir. Mr. Klein, good evening.
Hey, how y'all doing tonight? This is a quick one. It's just a cosmetic question. The Secretary Bridge, wonderful. What about that walk bridge? Is that the finished product? A pile of gravel? Are we planning on dressing that up?
We have some planting landscaping planned to be incorporated in there to make it a more attractive area.
Because you got a pile of gravel. I saw it right at the end of the bridge there. I'm just curious because the doctor, I can tell everyone's gone out of town. So I guess this would be on the city rather than the part the bridge would leave.
I appreciate you pointing that out. Public Works Garage is not far from there. We'll get a bucket, you know, down there and clean that up.
Public Works is, in fact, intending to construct sidewalks on both sides of that, tying that in correctly. It was not planned with the construction of the bridge specifically because the pedestrian bridge location was unknown precisely. We didn't know if it was going to be a sidewalk on the bridge or a separate structure. Turned out it was a separate structure. So Public Works was fully intending to construct the sidewalks and the pedestrian trails over to it and as well as complete landscaping and grading. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Hello, doctor.
Thank you very much this evening, fellow citizens. My name is Benjamin Noel. I've met many of you before. I'm glad to be here today. My family and I moved back into town a year ago after working for a year abroad for college. We moved into the Green Acres neighborhood, and we were pleasantly surprised to see the new park that's there by the water treatment facility. I've got three kids, a 10-year-old and two 4-year-olds. And I wanted to let you know that that is a top-notch facility that my kids love. We go there all the time, and it's amazing. So thank you so much for everyone who's involved in that project. That said, my 4-year-olds, at the same time, are on the not-quite-out-of-the-planet-training kind of phase of life at this point, right? They're almost there. There are still times when, you know, they got to go. And when you're like 4 years old and you got to go, like...
It's critical.
Telling them to hold it is not going to work. So when we're presented with obstacles like this, we either head back home, but that's at least like a 15 to 20 minute walk. That's not going to work for anyone because there's no way they're holding that long. Or we can make use of another option. I tried to find a polite way to say it. We'll just call it Dr. Luttrell. If you catch my drift. There's this really nice big tree that's between the park and the water treatment area. And I'll just say that it's not just dogs who are making use of this. And I'm just talking about my own kids. I've seen others as well. So I'm just letting you know, this is the situation that we have there at the park. Now, I have a solution to propose. Something that I understand is called a portable sanitation unit, also known colloquially as a port-a-potty. So I am coming to humbly request from my elected representatives to look to see what can be done to address this particular issue. I understand that a fully prom station is expensive and takes a lot of doing, but perhaps a portable unit that could be even examined to see its usage to estimate cost-benefit plans for down the road. That could be something. Also wanted to emphasize that this is a clear bipartisan win. We all go. Families will love it, kids will love it. I know anecdotally, and I know anecdotes are not statistics, but anecdotally, the other toddler parents that I know have all expressed frustration with things that have happened there at the park. They get all the kids there, and you know, with the seatbelts and everything, that's like 30 minutes. They get them there at the park. And then once they're there, they're playing and having a great time after 10 minutes. "I gotta go." So then it's another 20 minutes to get them back, and there's just no way we're coming back after that. That's the time we've got to be out there. So, thank you very much. This is something that I wanted to put to your attention as a clear winner for our community. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
You do understand that's God's way of testing to see if you're a worthy parent, right? Because that happens to everybody. You get them strapped in, it's just the way it goes.
Some test them okay, fast.
So noted. Thank you very much. That one's yours.
I put in more trees.
Don't forget the bushes, too.
Talk to Dr. Bo Weston, right?
We look forward to hearing your recommendations, okay? Anyone else?
I'm very confident there's had a smooth transition from that to mine.
Says launch, just jump right in.
It is a park. Well, I agree, it is a park. When I was first introduced to the commission two months ago, I mentioned that I had some crazy ideas in my head. The first one, we kicked off National Hotdog Day, June 27. Just want to report back, we gave out 180 hotdogs.
Good deal.
So we're moving.
Good deal. When's the next one?
National Hotdog Day, the two weeks, 17th? 19th, so. 19th, and then Ice Cream Business, the 17th of August. So that will be at the Constitutional Park, 11/1. On that day, come out, I hope. No business.
Good deal. Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, good evening. Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Stephanie Wade. I'm here on recognition of Lonell Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to put up something to recognize all of his accomplishments. I've read a few of his, plan on bringing copies of his diary.
It is lengthy.
I think it is. I've been a doctor long since then, and I'm respected. So it didn't matter once I copied it because I have it.
I'll ask one question. How many Grammys does he have? It's either three or five.
It was five.
Yeah. That, to me, says it all.
Right. And I just think it would be nice to put something up there somewhere I can have. I grew up beside him, played piano beside him. So I just don't understand why he ain't doing that.
So you claiming credit for his musicality?
There's several of them there, right?
I think it's a great idea. Let us look into it. How do you want to handle this, Mr. Scott? You want to get back with her? Do you want her to come back with us?
We'll be in touch. And then, at some point in the not-too-distant future, I may have a recommendation for the City Commission to consider.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't usually answer these things, but I'd suggest you also do the same presentation at fiscal court. Get them involved.
They meet tomorrow at 10 a.m. at the courthouse, fiscal courtroom, if you can make it. Good suggestion, sir. Anyone else?
Did they hear the public?
Huh?
Did they hear the public, Mayor? I just want her time to be fruitful. I don't know that the fiscal court hears the public, so...
Well, I'm sure if she were to raise her hand, I'm sure that she would get her...
Just a point of information.
I understand your point.
Well, the reason why I suggest that is that there's been some kind of petition or something going around, Home of Lonell Harris, international gospel singer. And I thought that group, somebody had been to fiscal court already, but I don't know.
Maybe we need to start a petition, ask the fiscal court to start doing it, Hear the Public. I don't mind doing that.
All right. I'll sign it.
You'll sign it?
I'll sign it.
Get the paper ready. All right.
You know what'll be Hear the Public, excluding city commissioners and the mayor.
That's quite all right. Quite all right. Anyone else? Mr. Sears, lead the way.
Sure, yeah. And so I just want to get four updates. Again, you can make them as brief as you want to, but I just feel like there's some things that we'd all like to know up here. It starts with wayfinding. My understanding, that's been going on for a long time. And we approved the budget. I think there was like $90,000. So where do we proceed from here? When does it get started? What are we doing? Do we know?
Ron, if I may, John and Rick and I are meeting this week on that. You're not aware of that. And we'll be providing you with our plan for the summer and implementation. We were giving John a chance to get his feet underneath him, and that's one of the things that we're going to work through with him. And like I said, we're trying to get together this week on the matter.
Okay.
Well, I think it's been a hang-up for me as well. We've just, we have a proposal, but we've tried several times to amend the proposal. So I guess my comment would be that as you make progress with that, or before you make too much progress, you should let, get the City Commission involved in about the location and the signage, on the signs.
Yes.
You know, we were given, what, four or five major sectors, quarters coming into our city and our county. And we wanted to be sure that we had a balance of signage in all those quarters for the places that we identified as been important.
Yeah.
As well as the community, that committee identified as been important.
Yeah. Very good. Good comment, and Kevin agreed. I think it got a little confusing there for a while, so a little bit of redo now that we've got the money approved, ready to move forward would be good.
And we've got John.
Number two, I know that we talked about it last time, and I think you had a meeting with Bran Stetter and Carroll. Is anything to report on that in terms of our fountain on the corner?
We're meeting with them in the morning, actually.
Oh, so you haven't had the meeting yet?
Not yet, no. With 4th of July, we couldn't get it scheduled last week.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough. Just don't want to let that ball drop.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any movement, and this might go to our attorney on the Parks and Rec agreement with the city and county?
I have not received any feedback from that yet officially.
Is that feedback gonna come from county attorney?
I don't know. I would suspect, I mean, the best...
Would you like me to find out?
The best course of action would be for the court to pass a resolution that would embody their comments, or at least bear a conversation that instructs the county attorney to share what their comments are. To be honest with you, I would rather the court speak by resolution as opposed to dealing, having an arms-length negotiation just with the county attorney who may or may not be able to persuade the court in one fashion or another. I think it'd be, we've been down that path before and on prior issues, and it would be more fruitful for those involved for the court to speak as a unit and then communicate that through their county attorney.
Have we sort of agreed that the proposal that was sent to fiscal court is our agreed-upon resolution?
While you took no official action on it, we reviewed it wholeheartedly. That was the recommendation of staff. And it was, you'll remember, marked as a draft.
Yeah.
And it was intended to make the document easy to revise or strike on the court's part, should they disagree with certain provisions.
Yeah.
So, our, instead of you taking action first, which would have been unnecessary without knowing the court's position on some key issues such as trail maintenance and improvements, we presented a document that we thought would be acceptable by you in some form or fashion with the hopes that they would take it and give it due consideration and then pass some form of it and bring it back to you for further consideration.
Yeah. I appreciate the comments. You know, the Parks and Rec Board and our new director, they're moving forward, doing what they need to do, Trails Alliance, people are moving forward, but I think some clarity needs to come, and we all know that. I just want to know where we're at on that. We need to know who's funding what and what's going on, especially that man out there. Number four, real easy. You know, we had a torrential downpour and some people were complaining that we're not keeping up with the maintenance of our drains, and so this is going to our engineers. But I do remember that there was some conversation about people clogging the drains with their grass and et cetera, and I think that might be the problem, but I'd like for one of the engineers just to make a comment on that, to kind of squelch those complaints.
Grass clippings, we do not like those in the storm drain. They are considered an erosion issue or a sediment issue, and in fact, is a violation of the ordinance. And those are supposed to be removed either by the homeowner or left on the lawn itself, not blown into the street, et cetera. But Public Works is proactive in going out and they do have a schedule. They do try to clean drains off on a regular basis, and they do have a crew that goes out and does that work. I know John doesn't coordinate that directly. I think other staff does that, but certainly we'll emphasize that with staff and make sure that the plan's being implemented properly. But we do that, and that is a nuisance.
Yeah. My guess is what I've already stated. Some of these streets are filling up because it's not because we're not keeping the drains open as well as we can, it's they're not helping us, probably. So, we see a lot of stuff in it, especially in the fall with leaves, et cetera, so... Okay. I appreciate everybody's comments on that. I'll just end my little commissioner comments with celebrating the 17th year, 70-year anniversary of Pioneer Playhouse, and so, Breaking Up With Elvis is the current one, and it's...
All right.
Yeah, so it's been a good thing. And the Irish are coming again. They're coming this month, so we'll look forward to seeing them.
You are a veritable font of influence. You know that? I was gonna, the drain issue seems like Coyle Street, Locust and Chestnut are the ones that got the most attention or complaints this time, but I'm sure that they all do it time to time, particularly when it rains that hard. That's just a, that's a downpour. The other thing was, still have people ask about the splash pad. What do we, timeframe on that?
We've working that into Public Works' schedule. I think they're slated to start on that, I think tomorrow. I think, isn't that right?
Yeah, we did all the form stuff.
Yeah.
Are you serious?
Very good.
So, we took some time to do some of the layout and do some of those details, some of the planning, and so, yeah, we hopefully will get that in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We're also blessed with another theater in the community of longevity. Westy Hill Community Theater celebrates 40 years, September 14th, and that is a Saturday. I don't know any way to summarize this, so I'm just gonna read this. Dear generous Sister City supporters, in the couple of weeks, Ryan Moffett, Director of the Irish Uplift Arts Group, and three others from Carrick Fergus, our sister city in Northern Ireland, will arrive in Danville. This will be the fifth summer our Irish friends have joined us to lead the Shamrock Workshops for students and adults at the Westy Hill Community Theater. As in the past, this summer's children's camp, featuring dance, vocals, and stagecraft, filled up almost immediately. Two days after our Irish friends arrive, they'll entertain us on the Constitution Square Stage from 10 to 11:00 a.m. That's Saturday, July the 20th. And get a token, a small tin of Irish sweetness to remind you of the Emerald Isle. And if you missed that morning's entertainment, Ryan and others will be performing at a showcase at the Westy Hill Theater that evening at 7:30. Ryan is important to us for another reason. He has agreed to be the Irish Coordinator of a new Danville-Carrick Fergus Student Exchange that will begin next summer. In October, there will be an informational meeting for students and parents and any Danville student who will be entering the 9th through 12th grade next summer will be eligible to apply in November. And finally, the Chief Tanes, the world-famous group of traditional Irish musicians and dancers, will perform at the Norton Center on February 15th as part of their Irish Goodbye Tour, which includes Liverpool, Barcelona, Toronto, New York, Nashville, San Diego, Boston, and yes, Danville.
Right.
As with the We Bangle Three Group that performed here last March 17, Sister City supporters will be offered a reduced ticket price and have their picture taken with the Chief Tanes following the performance. Just a brief acknowledgement that our good friend Heather Hinson and husband Jim, and I can't remember Jim's last name.
Tom Ung.
Huh?
Ung.
Ung, thank you. Are safe, but narrowly escaped with their three children after their fire, after their house completely burned to the ground. They were left with whatever clothes were on their back. So, your thoughts and prayers and any kind of support you might have, I'm sure would be appreciated. Anyone else?
Return, just a... Well, they just wiped out my list, which is good. But I can't sit here tonight without reminding the community of the passing of one of my dear friends, Mr. Victor Delaney, another silent but effective leader in the after-murder community. Visitation is tonight from 6 to 8, and the funeral tomorrow at 12 at First Christian Church here in Danville. But Victor was a powerful but silent, behind-the-scenes-type leader for the after-murder community.
6 to 8, visitation tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Visitation from 9 to 12 tomorrow, and the funeral's at 12:00.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move into item five, payment of the bills. I want to attain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve the June 11th.
Thank you, gentlemen.
2019 bill lists $838,294.21.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item six is Resolution Number 2019-07-08-01. This is a EAP renewal. Ms. Peak?
Staff would ask that you renew the Employee Assistance Program with Anthem Blue Cross for another year at $1.95 per employee per month.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Move for approval of Resolution 2019-07-08-01.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Cottle, second by Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item seven is the first reading of Ordinance Number 1932. This is the Parking Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Dexter, you want to read that first?
Yes, sir. This is a first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, Section 17-178 regarding the immobilization of motor vehicles after receipt of three unpaid parking citations, so as to establish a $50 fee for said immobilization. Again, this is a first reading. Immobilization is also known as booting a vehicle. So, if there is an individual who has parked and has three unpaid citations, the citation officer is authorized by current ordinance to place a boot on the vehicle, but the boot does not have a fee associated with it as of today, but code enforcement has requested that there be a $50 fee associated with it, and that is the point of the ordinance before you.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the first reading of Ordinance 1932, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, there's a $50 fee just to put more teeth in this that they're just having...
It is, and there's also significant staff time in actually placing the boot and then removing it. Apparently, it's heavy and also takes two officers to do it.
When I first read this, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, three warnings is pretty generous, so at that point...
Well, it's not, it's not three warnings. There's no warning if you have three unpaid tickets.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
So, in the past, what has the ordinance been?
The boot can be placed, but the city wasn't authorized to charge a fee for the booting.
Okay, that's the difference here.
And the $50 is sort of in line with other communities close by? Because I sort of laughed when I heard the $50.
Probably cheap compared to...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the real inconvenience is the boot.
Yes, I agree with this. You don't let me be the first winner.
So, is it on the third one or on the fourth?
No, it's not on the third one. You would have time to pay the third one. If you had three unpaid...
You could pay that.
So, the time would have had to have run for the third one to be due, so it would actually be your fourth.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments?
I was asking for our mayor, because you know, it tests your experience here.
Where's Bridget? Bridget, I owe you money tonight, I think? I don't know, we'll see.
I hope not.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Parris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Serres.
Yes.
Just remember, Mayor, you voted for that.
I know.
Mayor, the next item is a first reading of Ordinance 1933, which is an ordinance amending the City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, Section 8.1, revising the growing season in which vegetation is prohibited from exceeding 12 inches. Currently, your ordinance establishes a mowing season where vegetation that exceeds 12 inches from a certain time period, which is identified as May 1st through November 1st of each year, be kept at, you know, less than that 12-inch mark. It's a recommendation of staff that that restriction of May to November be removed and allow vegetation, if it exceeds 12 inches at any time of year, to be enforced as a code violation.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Do we need to read it first? Or does it matter?
I did.
You did. Okay. I will move for approval of Ordinance Number 1933.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Parris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Serres.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Continue, Mr. Dexter.
The next item is proposed Ordinance Number 1934, which is the first reading of an ordinance amending a general definition in the City of Danville Code of Ordinances of code enforcement officer to include the Director of Planning and Zoning and the Planning and Zoning Citation Officer. The purpose of the ordinance before you is that currently neither the Planning and Zoning Executive Director or his code enforcement officer is identified in the definition to issue citations, so this would allow those two individuals named to issue citations if there are violations in the Planning and Zoning Ordinance, which again would be beneficial to enforcing the ordinance before them.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll, I move for approval of first reading of Ordinance 1934.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
I was gonna ask Steve if that's, is that what you had in Bowling Green? Did you have citation authority there?
Yeah, and Bridget pointed out that some ordinance saw a harsh class five as a civil fine in the ordinance, but we can't utilize it as a civil citation because we're not named as citation officers. So, Bridget, the city would send a notice of violation, but I guess if there was a problem, it would be looking at criminal citation as opposed to civil. In fact, on the county side, that's the route we have to go down. So, the civil side is way more advantaged. If we had a violation, we actually don't have any notice of violation or compliance down the road. For the rest of violation, we'd like to do it on the civil side, and we'd be doing all the labor on that. We'll just have to modify our notice of violation to match the city's, and then issue the citation if it's taken.
When the law changed in 2013 to allow civil penalties to be issued for these types of penalties, again, was an enforcement bolster to help incentivize adherence to the code.
Can you give us an example of what you might cite?
We have a business in town that actually had some signs about the roof line, and we asked them to move, and at some point, we were at a standoff, and we noticed that notice of violation, and answer, some days you have to go the next step, more compliance, but sometimes you have to issue a citation, and sometimes that's when we get the message across and get a lot to deal with. So, it's a greater citation, and a civil citation is faster, get off, and end up in the lean, which I think, again, would get the violation corrected faster than the criminal. Have to go to district court and settle it that way. County attorney law, it should take longer, and more likely to have a violation without the outstanding longer. But most of the ones in the city side are signs. In the county right now, we have a mobile home that moved in on a lot, gentleman building extension on that mobile home that's in the right of way. That's the neighbors are calling every day, we're going to do a lot of building, and at this point, we have to build a criminal route, which would be a $25 criminal citation. If we ever got to district court, we can get it pursued that way. In the meantime, the neighbors are very frustrated because it's a slow process on the criminal side, so maybe someday we'll have a civil citation option on the county side. That's something really outstanding, we've got a couple of trailer issues up in the county.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Serres.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
All right, continue on, Mr. Dexter.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is the first reading of Ordinance Number 1935, which is an ordinance amending the City of Danville's existing ordinance... the City of Danville's existing ordinance pertaining to historic structures in order to specify the educational and attendance requirements of members serving on the Board of Architectural Review. The DAHB recently revised their bylaws to require, well, their bylaws require that they have certain educational component in order to be members in good standing, and this document would align the ordinance to incorporate that in the failure of a member to have the required educational component, that they would immediately create a vacancy, and you would have to reappoint a member, and that would happen on January 1st of each year. And then we also added to their bylaws upon their approval that in the event that a member is absent for three consecutive members, then that member is automatically removed, thus creating a vacancy. As in any committee or board that the city has, attendance and quorum often becomes an issue, but particularly when you have bodies that their votes either hold up progress or promote progress, the ability to be able to maintain a quorum is essential, and also to maintain a board that has the credentials required is essential. So they passed themselves a change to their bylaws requiring these provisions, creating a vacancy, and based upon that bylaw revision, this ordinance would simply accept their recommendation that the ordinance be amended in this manner to give more strength and teeth to what their bylaws now say.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for that?
I move to accept Ordinance Number 1935.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
I have a quick question. How often do they meet? Is it monthly?
Monthly.
Okay.
Who monitors this?
Who monitors what?
Well, the completion of the coursework and attendance.
The staff does.
Okay.
So Joni House and Bridget Lesterwood.
Very good. Thank you.
That's what I was going to ask.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarris.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Parris.
Yes. That completes our regular meeting agenda for tonight. It is my understanding we have need for executive session for personnel reasons?
Yes, sir. So requesting.
Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Take your time, Kevin.
I'll move that we go into executive session. We're going to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61-810-1F.
Wow, you're getting good.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like discussion, like motion, motion carries. We're in executive session. Everybody have a good evening.
I move we go back into regular session.
Here, second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. All in favor of going back into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We're in regular session.
Staff would ask that you promote Scott Dow to the position of Assistant Wastewater Rehab Superintendent.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Move we adjourn.
Motion carries. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Second and aye.
Opposed.
All right. Here we go, everybody.[1784.41]